All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and call to order the Stevensville Town Council's public hearing. Today is Thursday, March 4th, 2021. Let the record reflect that all council members and the mayor are in attendance this evening. Just a few items of housekeeping this evening. If you haven't already discovered, there's water up here at the front, near the entrance to the room. That's provided courtesy of the LDS Church here, and we appreciate them hosting us this evening. Once you've helped yourself to the water, you may find the need to use the restroom that's across the hall in either direction. If you didn't observe the ground rules that the town council expects of participants, both of themselves and folks attending tonight's meeting, those are posted on the doors as you enter the room. There's also some guidelines for public comments on the back of your agenda. For the courtesy of those speaking this evening, if you don't mind, please silence your phone or turn it off during the public hearing. Procedurally, when we come to the point for public comments under the items we're hearing tonight, you'll be asked to sign the sign-in sheet that's listed that's at the podium. So as you step forward and make your comment, please sign that sheet. That helps the clerk with making sure your spelling is correct with the name of your spell. Spelling of your name is correct in the minutes and helps us track the order of who spoke when in the meeting when the minutes are compiled. So that is important, and we appreciate you helping us with that. We're at the point in the agenda where we'll allow for public comment on items not listed on tonight's agenda. So odds are, just a suspicion, that most of you are here to speak to Burnt Fork Estates. If you're here to speak to the council on any other item that's not Burnt Fork Estates and that is not the reinstatement of charge for water and sewer bills, we invite you to the podium at this time. Kind of figured. Okay. We'll get right into it. Just for everyone's information, the meeting is being recorded, both audio and video. The video portion will be posted on the town's video channels following the meeting within 48 hours. We just do not have the ability to livestream the meeting from this facility, so that's the reason for that. Also, just note, it takes us a little bit up front to get microphones to people. It's just we're just dealing with the amount of microphones we have available, so we appreciate your patience with us there. So without delaying any further, we can move into public hearings. The way that this will work is we'll have the developers' representatives on Burnt Fork Estates present to the town council a brief and a proposal, and then we'll open the hearing for public comment. So just understand that that's how that process will work, and then we'll do a similar process for the reinstatement of the utility assistance program fee. Is there any business from the council other than the public hearing tonight? Okay. Mr. Kellogg?
Oh, excuse me. One of your thing now. Sorry, John.
I just wanted to move to allow for five minutes per person for comment tonight. There's a lot of people here to allow everyone to have their say and allow us not to be here until next week.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Devlin, seconded by Mr. Luddington, to allow five minutes per speaker under public comment this evening, giving everyone an opportunity to speak with the time available. Is there any council discussion? Any public comment on the five-minute limit?
It could be longer. Thank you. To me, as members of the council, for the record, Steve Gibson, 1517 Creekside Drive, Stevensville. I guess I would suggest that you see, since there's only one public per person meeting, I don't know that if that's the direction to go. My suggestion would be that you see what happens. If somebody goes on and on, is your right, shut them down. But there's only one public hearing in person. Okay.
Any further public comment? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, as you keep this process moving smoothly and to retain the form of the room, I ask that you refrain from applause after comments. That way, we can just keep moving. We're not here any longer than necessary. Is there any further public comment on the motion? Okay, hearing then, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Devlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Luddington.
Aye.
Councilmember Schur.
Aye.
Councilmember Vick.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes three to one. Okay, Mr. Kellogg, it's your turn now.
Thank you, Mayor Dewey, and members of council. It's a pleasure to finally be in front of you with this proposal. I will try to be brief in going through the presentation that we made to the planning board. I want to hit some highlights and then give you some indication of the responses that we prepared in response to the concerns that the planning board had created or had commented on. And with those, I have some letters and communications.
Can you speak a little louder?
I have some communications then that I would like to provide to the council that could be incorporated into the public record if that's acceptable.
Do you want to use this mic, John, so you can hold it closer? That's acceptable.
That would be up to them. Come on, John. No. This new song. It's my actor. It's Kansas.
I can't lick my finger.
Two and a half.
Sorry, I'm having trouble.
Thank you. What I provided to you are three items. Two are some analysis by our traffic engineer in response to, on the one hand, a suggestion by the planning board that we provide a through access to the R2 portion of Burnt Fork Estates. And with that, the other items are also in response to issues that the planning board brought up. Now, I won't detail later.
One minute.
If you'll bear with me, I'd like to go through, like I said, some of the high points that I identified for the planning board. This is a location map that shows, and I think you're all familiar with where the site is, but it's surrounded on the south and east side by Millburn Fork Road and Logan Lane. To the north, it is bounded by Creekside Meadows Phase 1. To the west, there's school property, and south and west, there's private property. Right now, we're in the first stages of the subdivision review process.
Sir, respectfully, if we're going to speak out of turn, this is your one and only warning. You'll be asked to leave the room. It's that simple.
You said five minutes.
No. If you heard Ms. Devlin's motion, her motion was to allow comment at five minutes.
On it.
Do not be argumentative. You'll be asked to leave the room. This is your one and only warning. If we are disorderly in this room, excuse me, if we are disorderly in this room, we will adjourn or recess, and this will go on longer than needs to.
Whatever you want to do.
So the first stage we're at is where the proposal is reviewed by the staff, city staff, the planning board, and town council. What we have in front of us is a recommendation from the planning board and the city staff for approval of the subdivision with conditions. If council wishes to adopt the recommendation and would wish to approve this subdivision with conditions, that would mean we would move to the second stage where we would actually prepare, where we would prepare construction documents that would be reviewed by the city Public Affairs Department, the Mont headed Department of Environmental Quality, and others as necessary. The third stage would be letting the contract to actually build infrastructure, and then finally, once that's all completed, we can go to file the plaque and allow further construction developments. The reason I am pointing this out is that there are a great number of items that need to be addressed, but they, the appropriate place for addressing them is in the second and third stage where we look at the conditions of approval. I think you're all aware that Creekside Meadows was approved back in 2003. Prior to that, the property was annexed into the city and zone R2 and R1. The...
Can I follow you guys? This is such a small map.
Yeah.
Matt, but Creekside Phase 1 is here, Creekside Phase 2 is there. As you know, phases 3, 4, and 5 were never developed by Arlo Elson, and they were purchased by Dwight and Rahal Hooly this last year. The entire five-phase area of Creekside Meadows was annexed into the Intestine Field and was zoned. North of this line here was on R1, single family. South of that and down to Millburn Fork Road was on R2. The first two phases were developed fairly soon after that, by 2007. Last year, actually over a year ago, when the Hoolys were looking to purchase the property, they were concerned about what the Creekside folks were concerned towards. So we met with them on December 17, 2019. The result of that meeting was we identified some concerns for the committee. not want to have too much traffic coming through Creekside. They proposed common area to separate the development from Creekside, and they were concerned about groundwater. So in response to the traffic concerns, the proposal that we have presented separates the R1 zoning from the R2 and funnels the majority of the traffic onto Logan Lane in response to the concerns that the committee had. Let me jump to the issues that the planning board was concerned with. We had looked at that option for redesigning the commercial portion of the development. So the board's concern was that they would like to see a connection through the commercial portion of the development to the R2 development, and they also recommended that we look to realign this roadway so that it's further away from the Logan Lane intersection. So we got to looking at how this would work out. We are not proposing this as, as our revision. We're saying that if council is interested in following through with what the planning board's concerns were, this is an option that we would put forward as potentially how that could be addressed. This design reduces the number of commercial lots by two. Instead of 16, there would be 14. And also, we began discussion with the Lowells to the west to see if there's an opportunity for sharing the...
Ladies and gentlemen, please, it's very noisy in the audience, and it's disrespectful, Mr. Kellogg and the council members who are trying to listen to the proposal. You could please retain yourselves and not make any noise and withhold your sidebar conversations. That'd be greatly appreciated.
In the event that the Lowells are not interested in that, it would be merely a realignment of the road to the east of it in a slight revision of this design. Now, like I said, we are not proposing that as the alternative. This is what we're presenting to you, but in response to what the planning board was looking for, we wanted to show that it's an opportunity that could be addressed. Also, in the packets of information you got, there's communication with the school district. And in response to our request for the school district to look into the impacts of this subdivision, there are three items that Dr. Moore wrote in response. One of the items had to do with the cost of hiring teachers. The second item though had to do with what we proposed in the way of pedestrian access, which we believe would be a benefit to both the development and the schools, and an opportunity for the students from this subdivision to pass through and over to the school property. As you can see in the letter from... Specifically, Dr. Moore says, "The district has no intention of building, maintaining, and supervising a trail." And they go back to, they go back to, "The plans have not been formalized for what will be done with the school property there." So in light of that, we kind of revised things a little bit there. Instead of a common area, we're looking at easement that would be 10 feet either side of a property lot, and it would be dependent on what the school is looking to, what they do six years down the road when Phase 4 of the subdivision is formalized. So a final item I'd like to briefly talk about that I think is a major concern of folks recently is the proposed commercial area. For comparison of C2 commercial in town, it's a low-intensity use that we're proposing here. If you look at the area behind the post office, it gives you an example of what C2 is and how it's been implemented in town. Within that C2 district, and I'll see on this map, within that C2 district, there are professional offices, dentist office, multifamily, and there's a gym there that Lisa Berzicki has. We are not looking with this C2 district to provide another node of commercial development that would detract from downtown Stevensville. It is not something like the Y because gas stations aren't allowed, tire repair is not allowed. We're looking at light commercial, and that is something that we think there is a need for in this area. As you're probably aware, industrial and commercial uses generally pick up a lot of the slack in tax revenue for the city relative to residential development. So we think it's an appropriate location for a commercial zone. The other two letters that are laying in front of you are from our traffic engineer. One of them is in reference to a potential revision of a roadway through the commercial connecting to the residential and how that changes some of the numbers. The second letter has to do with an evaluation of the traffic concerns kind of focused around the Logan Lane, Millburn Fork Road intersection. So that, I'll complete my comments, and if you have any questions, I'd certainly be willing to answer them. If you have questions on the Appleland traffic study, panning methods here, I'm sure you can speak more knowledge about that. Thank you.
Are there any questions from Mr. Kellogg from the town council? The council has before it, it's been available for some time now, two documents. One is the Burnt Fork Estates staff report that was completed on October 2nd, 2020. That staff report is the result of a collaborative process with the town's department heads. It was compiled by HDR Engineering in their review with the town's development code. So they reviewed the proposal, compared that to the town's development code, and then addressed any deficiencies or whatnot with the staff. The staff is also able to give a chance then or give a review themselves, and their review is included in that staff report. That was the, I guess, the process followed to bringing the conditions that were listed in that report. The planning and zoning board then received that staff report from the administration. They took, they went through the findings of fact first and foremost, the conclusions of law. of law of, of their requirements of a subdivision for Stevensville, and then they addressed each specific condition that was listed by, by the staff in their staff report. The Planning and Zoning Board then created the review and recommendation report from their board, and that was the result of their two meetings that they held, and I think that was a cumulative of twelve hours of meetings. They, from, from there, added some conditions to the requirements, or rather, conditions of approval if the town council wants to consider those. Their recommendation is included at the end of that report. I guess finally, their recommendation was to approve the subdivision with, excuse me, approve the preliminary plat with, with conditions, the conditions that they've noted. Many of those include the staff's original conditions. And then they also addressed a recommendation of approving the C2 zone change with the caveat that additional restrictions be placed by the town council through some level of covenant that restricts what type of business development could occur in that C2 zone. So, those are, I guess, the results from, from both the planning board's efforts as well as the administration's review of the, of the proposal. And so, those, again, are available for council's review and have been for some time and are posted on our website for public's review as well. Any, one last chance for questions from the town council, either myself or Mr. Kellogg? Okay. We will go ahead and open the public hearing for the Burnt Fork Estates preliminary plat. The, for those who are new to the public hearing process, please understand that the town does not have an opportunity, the town council nor did the developers have an opportunity to directly respond to your questions in the moment. The clerk is taking minutes throughout the meeting. There will be notes taken, but we are not able to accommodate a back and forth dialogue at the podium. So, we invite you to step forward. You can state your name and address at the podium, please, 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 sign the signing sheet, and then you may make your statements to the town council and then return to your seat. Again, I, I ask that you refrain from side conversations and show your respect towards the individuals speaking at that moment, and that we refrain from applause or otherwise any other outbursts in the meeting tonight. I appreciate it. So, we're clear? Signing the signing sheet does not count towards your five minutes.
I am really, I am really wishing my five minutes for Nancy Kopsiwa.
We're, we're doing five minutes per speaker.
Yeah.
So, she doesn't, we're not going to do that now. It's five minutes per speaker.
I'll just hand it off to me and my five minutes. The first thing I need to know is if the council.
Would you please speak into the, into the microphone?
I am Nancy Kopsiwa. I live in Creekside, middle subdivision, 294 Virg Lane. And the first thing I would like to know is if the council has in front of them a letter from a Susan Brown. You did receive copies of that? All, all of you have it? Okay, thank you.
This is the copy for the public record, too, please.
And like I say, this is from Susan Brown, a Stevensville resident. Dear members of the town council, due to the COVID, I cannot attend the March fourth hearing on the Burnt Fork Estates subdivision, nor do I have access to the internet. I therefore ask that this letter be read aloud at the hearing. I have not spoken out before as I have felt from what I've read that individuals living in Stevensville were asking the right questions, but now I understand that their concerns have been dismissed simply as neighbors who don't want it in their backyard. Living about four miles east of this proposed development, I will address several issues that also affect me: water availability, sewage, road, and commercial development. Any and all mitigation costs associated with any of the unresolved problems resulting from this development should be borne by the developer, not the citizens of Stevensville or Ravalli County. Water: approval of subdivision requires that the developer provide proof of approved water supply to meet its water demand. I will show that the Burnt Fork Estates proposal has failed to do for, do so. Therefore, as designed, this subdivision must be denied. What is the water demand of Burnt Fork Estates? On the website, March 1st of this year, the developer states a peak water demand of 239.6 gallons per minute for 121 lots. Looking at the assumption used in the program, this is lots, not residences. This is inaccurate as multifamily lot may have more than one resident. The 239.6 gallons per minute does not include water for lots or commercial development, including potential laundromats, car washes, et cetera. On March 2nd, I read the proposal at City Hall, and Section 10, Site Evaluation and Design, now allocates water for 78 single-family, two-and-a-half-bath homes, 127.5 gallons per minute; 142 multifamily at one-and-a-half baths, 150 gallons per minute; irrigation of 28.2 acres, 300 gallons per minute; and commercial office space, 33 gallons per minute, for a total of 600 gallons per minute. That's a far cry from the 239 gallons per minute that has been proposed elsewhere. But in speaking with the staff at Town Hall on March 2nd, I learned that this may be even higher. Once a lot has been purchased, there is nothing dictating what is built. A home may be a two-story with four bedrooms, and a soon duplex may become a fourplex. And the only limitation would be based on height and setback requirements. Commercial lots could have laundromats, hairdressers, car washes, instead of accounts and attorneys. This demand could just keep going up. 700 gallons a minute, 800 gallons a minute, there'd be no limit. Burnt Fork Estates has no limits on water demand. The plat map must specify the exact type of multifamily unit that is allowed on each lot.
Next, please.
Marsha Calcovan from Creekside Development. When the town of Stevensville adds in the water demand for unbuilt lots, the structures built but not yet hooked up, do the existing field, well fields, have the capacity to meet this, this kind of demand? Is it known fact that there is an intersection between surface water, irrigation water, and groundwater wells? It is true that Burnt Fork Drainage, the Burnt Fork Drainage is closed, is a closed basin. That means there can't be no development of water, of new water. There will be water come from the demand, of, of the demand at Burnt Fork Estates. Any increased usage? I'm sorry. In Section 8 of the Burnt Fork Estates proposal is a discussion of water needs of original Creekside development. It stated that there was the need for a new water well to meet the demands of the new subdivision, and there was still, would be sufficient bonding if needed to complete sewer and water system. However, the developer would not agree to pay the cost of the well, suggest the town was interfracture fees, the developer agreed to provide a well site by dedicated dedication of land. The town council placed a condition of approval of a final plat to ensure water and sewer systems are adequate, to ensure no adverse impact shores of water or sewer systems in the town of Stevensville. Was any condition of approval met? To all of you who live in Stevensville, pay for the water? I think that you may have picked up the bill. Do you want to do it again? According to Creekside approval, all water systems have to be completed by 2013. So, Burnt Fork Estates must stand on its own merit. If a well is not already permitted to meet the, the demands of a new subdivision, it is not unusual for a developer to transfer surface water rights to groundwater to avoid the cost of high geologic studies requirement permit a new well mitigate impacts of existing water rights. There is an October 24th, 2019 letter proposed from Mayor Dooly to developer Holy suggesting he makes such a water transfer. Such water rights appear in the index. It says, "Burnt Fork Creek, 24, 112.2 GPMs, and North Swamp Creek, 2nd, 28, 98.7. Total is 210.37." Most importantly, both water rights, 2081 and 2082, are not available. And from October 15th to October 15th each year, for five months of the year, no water is available to meet the subdivisions for water deny, water demand. Further, the right is not a fantastic right. It is often turns out by July or August, and it would even be unavailable to meet the high demand of summer watering. In Section 2, the developer expects the town of Stevensville to supply the water for Burnt Fork Estates. How does the 0 to 220 GPM supply compare to the proposed demand? A drop of the bucket. The water rights provided by Burnt Fork Estates will provide virtually no contribution to their demand. Even though the intent of Burnt Fork Estates is to transfer all rights to the town, we only want to transfer a percentage of the water right at a time related to the percentage of land development. If the town well field cannot meet the current and committed demand, it is apparent that a new well will be needed to ensure that there is water to meet the demands of Burnt Fork Estates. Where will it be located? Has a committed permit been applied for? Been approved? Have hydrologic studies been completed? Do you citizens of Stevensville want to pick up all those costs? You better speak out.
Okay, next, please.
I'm Juan from, a resident of Creekside, Nevada. Until all water questions are resolved, this proposal is free of court, it must be denied. Sewage: it has been shown that the city sewage treatment facility can handle the additional load of this development on top of all current buildings and undeveloped plot of lots that have yet to be looked up. Any increased load of the Bitteru River will impact citizens of Ravalli County who recreate and love the river, not just the town of Stevensville. The developer must bear the cost of any sewage treatment facility upgrades until that time, this proposal should be denied. On the plat map, it was not clear if the retention or detention ponds are covered. Yet both of what will be done for mosquito abatement in a world of West Nile virus and Zika virus? How will they be contained to prevent child access? Subject of road: I must pass the Logan Road intersection with Middle Burnt Fork Road each time I would attempt. A friend was extracted from a car at this intersection after a car running the Logan stop sign T-bone turn. Between 1996 and 2000, a road report was completed for a proposed subdivision about eight miles east of this intersection. At that time, Logan Crossing was one of the 10 most dangerous intersections in Ravalli County. That subdivision was denied. In the last 25 years, all that I can see that has been done to resolve that problem is the addition of a couple of warning signs. In Section 2 of their proposal, the analysis shows that there is still above average crash rate of 3.1 compared to an average of .5 to 1.5 at this intersection. That is three to six times the average. Between 2015 and 2019, there were eight crashes, and now they want to add more cars. Not only that, their numbers are off. They state there will be up to 1,675 trips per day, vehicles per, than we did here in Land Drive. Due to the subdivision, 77 single-family lots with 727 vehicle drives, 48 multifamily lots with 351 vehicle drives per day, commercial lots with 597 vehicle drives per day, for a total of 1,675. It appears that the traffic analysis assumes multifamily units make fewer trips per day than single households. January 2020 plat diagram. How could this be possible? This is the same error that they made on water demand using lots instead of households. The actual number of trips per day will be considerably more. In 2019, according to their report, there were 1,475 vehicles per day on the Middle Burnt Fork Road. Now what? What is the proposed solution for the dangerous Logan Mid, Middle Burnt Fork intersection? I don't think their idea of a visual detector that notifies drivers of approaching cars is sufficient. The road impact study is flawed. Subject commercial: I already stated that commercial development could significantly increase the water and sewage demand. Has this been addressed? But more than that, I feel it does not belong in the development. I shop local, not in Zulu, because I value the wonderful community. I pay more, it's okay. I love shopping Main Street, first Friday events. We don't need this proposed commercial development. The cost closet was originally on Main Street but had to re-go pay when the building was torn down. Both being an entry partner, I'm not for profit. They are helping the community in need, they do not need set a precedent for commercial development. Conclusion: This proposed subdivision was undefined. Multifamily and commercial development part sees the vision of the original Creekside subdivision. You do not have to accommodate the new developer's plans. Scale back. Not all our two lots must be built to their maximum capacity. Are there other possibilities that have yet to be examined? Could the commercial zone be that area for the well that could tie into the pumping station? Until the production capacity of the new well is proven by a test well, there's no way to know if a specific demand can be met. Until which time, all questions are answered, these calculations are corrected, types of building are specified, and the developer exhibits how he will develop and bring the cost of the water supply, the Burnt Fork Estates should be denied. There should be no conditional approval. Thank you for your time.
Next comment, please.
To sign something. Anyway, my name is Mal Cook, and I don't live in that subdivision. I live at 210 Park Avenue. And when they did the, the. And when they did the subdivision up there, the last one, they were told, any of the people around the area knew that they shouldn't be coming down through that field. I'll get a sight of the school in front of me there because of the underground water system. They did it anyway, and my house was flooded. And it took me a couple of years in court to get that all straightened out. I don't know where they're planning on putting the sewer line in it, but if it was coming to my house, they'd have a fight on their hands. Because I won't allow it to happen if they have to keep me in court the rest of my life, which might not be that long. But they, as far as the sewer going into Stevensville, the people in Stevensville paid for that sewer system. Since I've lived here, we paid for it twice for the upgrades on that. And for somebody to come in from the outside and swoop in and put a massive subdivision in and take advantage of that so we get to start another one, guess this is as ridiculous a thing as I've ever heard. They need to look into that type of a thing. I, you take Stevensville, the town itself is very struggling for the businesses downtown. And to move businesses and put them up there in the middle of nowhere in that subdivision and take away from the town is not, it doesn't make sense to the normal person, I guess. I guess I'm very curious as to where the sewer system's going to go, the pipes are going to go, and who they're going to mess up. That has really got me concerned. I really don't want to see that all over again. Anyway, that's my concern, and I don't think the people in Stevensville should pay for their well. Absolutely not. If they want water, they need to dig their own well. I'm not paying. I don't want to pay for it, neither does anybody else I know. And we don't want to be flooded out of town or the school that put the pipes through there. Thank you very much.
I am Bob Mickelson, Stevensville 222 Turner Street. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, citizens of Stevensville. I come before you with major concerns regarding proposed Birdford Estates subdivision. Concern number one. Will it be adequate water or wastewater capacity? What we know seriously questions adding up water or wastewater facility will be available. The town of Stevensville 2016 growth policy states on page 10 through 12, in 45 lots altogether, with full subdivision approved and built up, there is potential for an additional 255 wastewater connections on lands early within Stevensville town limits, which exceeds the current capacity of Stevensville wastewater treatment system. Mayor Dewey wrote a letter to Dwight and Ralph Hooly on October 4, 2019, about verification regarding proposed Birdford Estates subdivision. Some of the mayor's facts are not entirely true. See item A. The town of Stevensville's water wells are not in compliance with the DNEQ, and the town of Stevensville holds no water rights to our water. DNRC has immediately stated that the town should not move forward with any development until these issues are resolved. See item B. A letter from Jim Mayek, the regional manager, manager of Water Resources Services. On February 25, 2020, Mayor Dewey received a letter from Ross Miller, our water rights attorney, to discuss a global permit application for Twin Creeks Field Well and welling with what. I'm wondering if Mr. Miller's three suggestions to bring the town in compliance with the well fields and water rights have been brought before the council. Two of those are Hydras Solutions and WGM. I recently had a person-to-person talk with Mr. George Thomas. He's the town of Stevensville's ex county road director. According to George, in order for the town of Stevensville to have enough water and sewer for the proposed Birdford development, it would need to do the following. Add a water capacity storage tank. For it to manage to put the storage tank on. Add another service line from the storage tanks to the town. Add another lift station. Add one to two well offices. Add one bay to water wells. The total cost of these upgrades would be $3 to $4 million. These are George estimates. Will the developers pay this, or will the town's taxpayers be left to foot the bill if this is approved? Subsumes considered from the HDR report. The approval of a primary plat is therefore not a guarantee that the water system or wastewater facility will have a capacity for service at the time of final plat application and the capacity will be evaluated. HDR report page 13. All outside water and wastewater improvements related to the need to increase the system capacity as a result of this project shall be the responsibility of the developer. HDR staff report page 15. Approving permit shall be obtained from Ravalli County for access to Middle Birdford Road and Logan Lane before the issues of a final plat for phase one. Town staff report, proposed development will have existing legal and physical access to two dedicated county roads, the Birdford Road and Logan Lane. As of today, I don't think any of this has been addressed to my knowledge. Number two, increased traffic. Decreased traffic will negatively impact all letters of Logan Lane. There's already a major congestion at Mid Birdford and Eastside Highway, and Logan Lane and Eastside Highway. The study done by BFE is incomplete. It does not address the commercial area that does not have access to Mid Birdford Road. See item C, Ravalli County Road Report. Traffic facts indicate a seriously safety problem that must be addressed. Is Logan Lane adequate for significant increase in traffic? What about shoulders, turn lanes? Efficient movement of traffic? Can the town really put a magnetic speed sign on the county road or state highway? There has been an independent, has there been an independent comprehensive study done regarding the impact of Stevensville School District as far as increasing student population? Traffic, safety, increase in our town's population by possibly a third has to have an impact. Has there been an independent study on the environmental impact of this whole development? And concern number three, a commercial zone. Proposed commercial zone development is not a buffer zone, but a downtown. The business goal is to build the downtown with any protected businesses, not set them up far away from Stevensville downtown. One more thing. The town paid $4,629.32.
Mr. Michelson, your time is up.
And $2,184.21.
Okay, Mr. Michelson, your time is up. Next speaker, please. Mr. Michelson, respectfully, sir. Please take your seat. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Jim Calcoman. I live at 287 Birch Road. Mayor, council members, the Birdford proposal should go back to the starting line until the track is cleared of all obstacles. For instance, the commercial rezoning request for the corner of Logan and Middle Birdford is out of place. Six months ago, the developers' representatives were denied a road east of Middle Birdford Road for their proposed commercial area. They have not yet met with that county road administrator to discuss this matter or his other concerns. Now, we learned that all that commercial zone traffic, if this would ever be proposed, which it would be ridiculous to do so, would go onto Logan. Sort of makes a person curious how the developer can assume this access will automatically be granted, but now apparently they pulled it off the table, which means that the rezoning request with an access to Middle Birdford is out of line. So if the rezoning is not available, the whole proposal should be denied and start over. But here's another item to raise the public's curiosity. The property does not have water rights. We know that. This is not a modern problem. It's been known for years. The result is that the current town administration must address and correct this issue. Without water rights, the proposed 220 families would have no water. Another issue deals with water capacity. Bob Michelson addressed that. There's not enough. We know that. Wells have been operating at capacity. Last August, for those folks in the audience that don't know it, the town paid an additional $3,000 in additional tax dollars because the pumps were running continuously. That $3,000 worth was for electricity, just to run the pumps. If they're running continuously now, how could 220 more homes be connected? Stevensville does not have water capacity for a new subdivision. Another, if anyone looked at this in another way, and that's from the town's documents. The 2016 town growth policy talked about 255 creekside and Twin Creeks water connections, said, quote, "This many new connections would bring Stevensville's water system to capacity requiring expansion in order to accommodate future annexations," quote. Since this policy was adopted, there have been 46 new houses, four new businesses added in Stevensville. 16 units are nearing completion by date. 16 lots are in the Birdford proposed commercial zone, maybe 14 now. The new laundromat uses the equivalent to water of 16 homes. Twin Creeks will soon be adding 40 to 50 new homes, add Birdford 220 homes. That total far exceeds 255. If Birdford would be approved, expanded water capacity will be required. Who is going to pay? Three of town's water wells have not been approved by the Department of Environmental Quality. Why not? They must be approved in advance before this is even considered, this proposal. Water represents many money issues. Who pays to upgrade the systems and rectify the problems? In a meeting with council members Devlin and Lennyton a couple weeks ago, this issue was raised. Paul Lennyton said the developer would have to pay for some of these upgrades. What is the developer's percentage? Does the developer pay all? 10%? Half? Town taxpayers need to know. We pay a considerable amount monthly for water now and will far into the future. A new well would cost $300,000 to $500,000. A new reservoir in excess of $1 million. A booster pump will be needed. Even if this is $100,000, $200,000, who pays? The town should address all these water issues, and when they are resolved, then this proposal maybe should be considered, not before. Conditions are part of the language. Really, they are assumptions that homes will be able to be hooked up to water, that there will be adequate water, that wells will be brought into compliance, and previously that an access might be available on the Middle Birdford. This proposal is like picking a can down the road. Speaking of roads, with all Birdford traffic slated to enter on the Logan, traffic nightmares will be expected. Much of that traffic is going to access through creeksides, three roads, from the proposed subdivision into the creekside drive and creekside division. As president of the Creekside HOA, most owners vehemently object to this assault on a quiet neighborhood. 220 homes times eight trips daily means lots more traffic. By the way, when the planning and zoning board met, the members requested a road be engineered into the proposed commercial zone from the residential area. The town website does not show this redrawn plat. Was it being so effort just for looks? The board also discussed the nation's main traffic.
Mr. Calcoman, your time has started.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, Creekside town residents are not opposed to progress. They are opposed to the road for high density, high power. They're opposed to the high density, high power.
Mr. Calcoman, this is your last warning. Please take your seat.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Next speaker, please.
And in case you don't know the water.
Mr. Calcoman, please take your seat.
Just an FYI, there's no hands in the hands. Good evening. My name is Catherine Fickler, and my address is 1116 Cooney Bridge Road, Florence. I am testifying tonight as the coordinator for Rivers Mist Gallery and Gifts located at 317 Main Street, Stevensville. Although my residence is in Florence, I have had my pottery and paintings in Rivers Mist for six years. This is not a hobby shop. The majority of our 30 members are full-time artists and artisans with no other work-related income. To be an artist brings great joy and a great deal of hard work and many long hours. Through our six years of operation, we have seen many changes in Stevensville. There used to be a downtown association and an economic development director. Both are needed. A lot of businesses have come and gone in downtown. Those that have persevered have often struggled, especially in 2020, and frankly, we don't know when things will change for the positive. In order to maintain a vibrant downtown business district, we need to stick together and not divide our resources by spreading out beyond the business district designated for a reason five years ago. Downtown Stevensville has such charm and history. It has great potential to be a destination with places to shop, to eat, and relax, and enjoy recreation. On behalf of all of us, 30 members of Rivers Mist Gallery and Gifts, I ask that you not approve the business part of this subdivision proposal by changing the long-held business district of Stevensville. Let's instead work together to make the oldest town in our state an enterprising and vibrant place to live and do business. You have a very weighty decision on your hands. I hope that the testimonies that you have heard tonight will bring you to a balanced and wise decision with the future of all of Stevensville at the forefront. Thank you.
Hedges Beach, 3627 Highway 93. I am here to explain what it's like, it has been like to be a business owner in Stevensville, and why we should keep the growth policy pertaining to the commercial business district as it is and not allow commercial business district in proposed Birdford Estates. I have owned and operated two or three at a time, Main Street businesses consistently for the last 32 years. It has not been easy to keep the bills paid and the doors open. I have seen over 100 businesses come and go. Actually, 109 is what I came up with last night, and I don't want to be missing a bunch just to remember. Other businesses have been here longer, but have changed hands numerous times. I'm here to tell you, there's a reason few have stayed. It's beyond hard. I have witnessed the ups and downs of Main Street and am still waiting for the town to flourish. For those of you who don't know me, I moved here from Vegas by way of Los Angeles. The old saying, "What's the difference between a rich Californian and a poor Vittoruter?" About six months? It's true. I put everything I owned into building the theater and the building next door and keeping them open. My father poured money into my businesses, helped nap up, and two other businesses get started at 0% interest. There was a rumor going around that I was a millionaire. I wish. During my 32 years in business in Stevensville, I have struggled to pay myself. During my 32 years in business in Stevensville, I have struggled to pay myself. My alterations business keeps my other businesses and myself alive. Again, it's hard. A lot of people think you have, if you have a business, you have money to spare. When the power company was deregulated, my bill doubled two months in a row. When the sewer was built, my water and sewer bill went from $30 a month to $138 and stayed there for four years. I was told numerous times that the business district had to pay more than the town residents because we could afford it. Over the years, due to the lack of payment, my building's power was cut off so many times, I was on a first-name basis with the power plant. Both my buildings went up for sale for back income taxes along with my home, numerous times. I had to give up my car insurance and my house insurance at times. One year, I even had to rely on a friend for food. I still have to do alterations to help keep Rivers Mist Gallery's bills paid. You may think she's not a good businessperson, or why didn't she get a job at Super won or Valley Drug? I'm probably not a good businessperson, but I believe in my businesses and I believe in this town. I first came down Main Street in 1976. It was dead. When I moved here in 1988, there were more empty buildings than rents once. Every now and then someone talks about how Stevensville is booming. I always reply, "Well, that's hope." It hasn't happened yet. If you decide to allow a commercial space in the Burnport Estates, I can assure you, it will kill business on Main Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jeff Wilson. I originally from Beale County, have resided in Beale since 1981. To say that I have witnessed a lot of changes in the valley in the last 40 years would be an understatement. I believe I'm uniquely qualified to share some thoughts on the development of Burnport Estates. I am a Realtor with exit realty Beale Valley and was involved in the process of this transaction. The principals, my clients, were aware that this subdivision had already been approved by the town of Stevensville over 15 years ago. They also knew that the approval had expired and that they had to reapply for preliminary plat approval for the times town of Stevensville. The developers had invested considerable time and expense to get to this point in this process. From my perspective, the days of dividing large pieces of land into one and two bigger tracts are limited in this valley. Any builder will tell you we are running out of buildable lots in the Beale Valley. I'm also one of the board of the valley, counting Habitat for Humanity. Our organization is really struggling to locate affordable lots to build on. Currently, we have one home under construction and only one lot remaining. Our goal is to build two homes a year, but without affordable lots to build on, this goal will be very difficult to achieve. The influx of people continually grow. How are we going to responsibly meet the demand? This request before the town of Stevensville goes a long ways towards reaching that goal. Mitigating impacts to water, sewer, traffic, and fire are all included. It increases the tax base for the town of Stevensville with the increased revenue phased through the year 2030. This tax base increase will help move the town of Stevensville forward. Inclusions of multifamily lots, addressing the density issue by providing more affordable livable space with lower impacts on the city services. This request before you tonight to rezonate 16 lots, possibly 14, from R2 multifamily to C2 light commercial, will meet the needs for a new fire station on Do Megat Land. The fire station is in this location, will also benefit all the residents in the area to help with their home insurance policies. The additional 16 light commercial lots enhances what Stevensville embodies. It will give the town of Stevensville more opportunities and a larger base to promote businesses' growth in the town. The 2016 growth policy outlines the need for diversifying the towns of Stevensville's tax-based revenue. Based on that report, only a quarter of the property tax revenue comes from commercial, whereas two-thirds of the property tax revenue currently comes from residential. Approving this zoning request goes a long ways towards diversifying the town of Stevensville's tax base. The plat layout for the C2 lots are located in the corner of Middle Burnport and Logan Lane, focused strictly as a business center. Proposed businesses will see the benefit to be involved in a well-played-out business center. Main Street Stevensville is vibrant and healthy, and I do not see the 16 lots of Burnport Estates as competition, but rather a complement to what exists. They do not take away the inherent charm of Main Street Stevensville, but gives the town more opportunity to promote the town, to encourage business into the community. In closing, the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic has created an environment for people to work remotely. We have seen the beginning of that influx. Families are looking in more, families are looking for more money to grow their families and businesses. The development of Burnport Estates and requests for rezoning meets needs, meets that need at all by providing a well-thought-out design that promotes pent-up, simple family demands for housing, multifamily, and light commercial. Thank you for your time. For the record, I'd like to read this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Steve Gibson, 1517 Creekside. Pardon my voice. I had some inaudible, I have farther to go. I sound a little weird. I was going to wave, but I look at this room, and I know that the majority of these people in this room are opposed to this development for different reasons. So far, you've heard 10 against and the last person for was a Realtor who sold this one. Can you think about that? I'm going to change my presentation a little bit because of the limit of time, which I think is unfortunate. There's only one in-person public meeting. This current application is totally incomplete and inaccurate and does not meet statute or requirements at this time. There have been rumors and statements about this continuation of Creekside Meadows. It is absolutely not. This is no such thing as three, four, and five. How many? This is a separate subdivision, or it would be called Creekside Meadows 2. No covenants like ours. And I've heard people talk about private property rights. Okay, let's talk about mine. Yeah, I live in Creekside Meadows. And when I bought that house, it was explained to me that there might be a further phase with the same type of covenants and the same type of houses. That isn't what this is about. But let's talk about my private property rights. Currently, there are proposing a few feet from my backyard, which I have no control over, a half the length of a football field retention pot. Some four feet deep. Who's going to maintain that? Who's going to provide for the safety? Who's going to provide for the security that children do not go into that retention pot? I can't. Is the town going to do that? And what does that cost? It's Burnport Estates' separate subdivision, using the majority of the traffic to come through a separate subdivision, which is currently a dead-end cul-de-sac. You might want to consider access on Second Street, where Mr. Kellogg lives, which is a direct connection to this current subdivision and is a connection to the town. I'd just like to say, in my 42 years as a public servant in Montana, including serving in the Montana Legislature, I have never seen anything like this in my life, especially how it has limited the ability for the public to participate. My understanding of what the first subdivision, Creekside, was for, I reckon, I think there were six public hearings, maybe seven. You're having one and the next one within a few days, and saying virtual. Why can't you do both? You can do both. You did both for the board meeting, which, by the way, the board meeting, which I watched all the way through, twice. At the beginning of the meeting, people were able to call in. Some couldn't get through. People were able to write in. They were never read. The majority of those write-ins, to my knowledge, were opposed, over 95%. At 1:00 AM, if anybody was still up, I was, which I usually am not, public wasn't allowed to call in again. And then it was announced there'd be a meeting next week that was not published. Public participation. You can get through with COVID. We've all got through with COVID. Couldn't visit grandparents, couldn't see our children at Christmas. They can wait. I hope you, as a council, and again, with that board meeting, it was obvious to me there was more concern about the elders' concerns than the citizens', the majority of that board. And I would encourage you to listen if they have that record. I don't know if any minutes have been approved for that board. They didn't approve, and someone resigned after that meeting. This should go back to the board. This is totally incomplete and inaccurate. When I was in the state legislature, and I respect what you do, I was in your seats on a bigger scale, and I was on this council for a short period of time. We used to talk about the three Cs. And when you made your decision, I would respectfully suggest that you consider the three Cs. And obviously, it's sort of the Constitution. But the other two Cs are constituents in your conscience.
Okay, Mr. Gibson.
Listen to all these people who you work for. You work for these people.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Not the mayor and not the developer. Thank you for your time.
We've heard quite a bit tonight about water. We're going to hear a little more about water.
Sir, can I ask you to state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
State your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tony Norman, 303 Sereno, Stevensville, Creekside Meadows.
Thank you.
Now, talk about water. Let's make it a little personal. And I want to talk about water on a personal level. When my wife and I moved into Creekside Meadows in 2005, we got our lawn in, we put our sprinkler system in, and we got ready to tie the landscaping all in. Bingo. Turned on our water. We didn't have any pressure. We couldn't water anything. So we called the town. You guys are going to come out and check our water pressure. So they came out and they checked our water pressure. We had 28 full pounds of pressure. 28 pounds. The state says you're required to have at least a minimum of 30. And we had 28. So we had to tell them, "Well, what are you going to do?" "Well, I don't know. What am I going to do?" They didn't do anything. I had to have a booster pump put in so that I had additional water pressure so that I could take care of my landscaping. Now, my rewards for doing that? The city sent me a nice letter and told me that I had 30 days to discontinue or disconnect my booster pump, or they were going to turn off my water. And my response to them was, "Bring it on, baby. Bring it on." So anyway, until 2014, we had a booster pump. The town finally put in a little booster pump of their own in 2014. So I went from 60 pounds that I had been at down to 50. And I've noticed ever since then, I don't know if it's because of the additional building, what, but my pressure seems to be dwindling again. So we're very concerned about what we're talking about now because is history going to repeat itself again? I hear so many different things, and I'm concerned about me. I don't hear anybody saying, "Don't worry. You're going to be fine. You're going to have a lot of water pressure." Is it going to repeat itself again? I'm very concerned about that. I hope that, and I'm wrong, I hope that we'll work this out so that there is decent water and it won't necessarily be because of a new development that hopefully doesn't go in. You know, talking about this development, it's all about money. That's all it is. Somebody buys some land, somebody's going to develop it, they're going to take their money, and they're going to go. And we're going to be left with what's left behind, like it was in Creekside Meadows, which should never have been built on that land.
Mr. Norman, I'm sorry. I'm going to give you a few more seconds, but could we please stop the side conversations in the back of the room, Mr. Gibson? It's distracting for the council to listen to someone's comments. Thank you. Mr. Norman, please continue.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear what you were saying.
Please continue.
He didn't know that you interrupted him.
We haven't talked too much about waste treatment. There again, we're concerned about what the future is with waste treatment. We hear multiple different statements. Some people, "Oh, the town's, I think, no problem." We got this covered, and then we hear from ex-employees, it's going to be a big problem if it goes forward as it is. Just a second. Talking about Creekside Meadows, and the last speaker mentioned what a wonderful development it is. And we do have covenants there. And then one of the covenants is that you can only put a two-story house facing Logan. And there are two reasons for that. One, it's kind of a buffer for Logan, and two, it doesn't hinder our ability to see the Beale Mountains, which are so beautiful. Now, the covenant that they're talking about for Burnport Estates is that you put a two-story house wherever you want. So some of us might be surrounded by two-story houses where we won't be able to see Beale Mountains anymore. All we'll be seeing is sky above us. The last thing I just want to mention is cost. We're talking about major cost here. We're talking about additional water needs, waste treatment needs, street maintenance.
Okay, Mr. Norman.
The town of Stevensville can't maintain the streets they have now, let alone putting in more. If you want to come out and look in front of my house, you can see what I'm talking about.
Mr. Norman, that concludes your time. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you all.
While I'm filling this out, my name is Lori Lucree, and I-
While I'm filling this out, my name is Lori Lucrey, and I live at 4194 East Side Highway in Stevensville, not in City Limits. Our problem is, anybody knows that corner of Logan and East Side Highway? All I hear is Logan and Middleburg Fork. There's another side to Logan, and that side to Logan has a stop sign. But I would say it's a yield sign because nine out of 10 people don't stop there. Three weeks ago, we had three accidents in one in three days. Why? Because they drive too fast and it's icy. The other thing is Logan is owned by the county, not by the city. So when the county comes through and they do their snow plows on East Side Highway, Logan's last. And I don't know how the people that live on Creekside Meadows slide across that road because it is literally ice in the winter time. They don't get to that road until late in the day, if at all. So that's something else that we need to consider is those people that live in that subdivision are not all going to be going to Middleburg Fork, they're going to East Side Highway. And that is a huge problem. That intersection needs to be completely redone.
My name is Leanna Robaugh, and I'm not going to talk to you about water, sewer, or roads because you've already heard it. I don't know whether you're ever going to pay attention to it or not, but you've heard it. I want to say, sometimes we forget what we raise our hands and even oath for. To testify in a legal suit, we raise our hands and declare we will tell the truth. To serve a town as a council member, we raise our right hand and take it out to serve the citizens of the community. You do not serve those who wish to place an unbearable burden upon the town. Serving the citizens of Stevensville is an honor and an obligation to carry on the business of the town. Representing the residents is a sacred duty of those chosen or likely to serve. Representing, uh, excuse me, nowhere in the oath you take is a sentence to represent those special interests who have monetary or other unwanted designs upon the campus Stevensville. Ask yourselves what the developers of this subdivision want. They are not planning this for altruistic reasons. It's all about making a profit. You do not represent them. You are here to take care of and represent your citizens. Not too long ago, I posted a poll on several Facebook sites. It was a simple poll. It asked you, do you favor or against or have no opinion concerning the Burtford Estates' development? I have a separate list of the respondents for your reading. Understand, this is a small sampling of the town's residents and those outlying residents who wanted to express their vote. The final tally, 112 people voted, 101 were against. There were four people who voted, yes, there were four of those. Seven had no opinions. One positive thing has happened. We were a divided town before this issue. Now it appears that we are united. These people are your neighbors. They are the ones you greet in the store. I will probably do that. They are voters, mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, citizens of our community. To ignore them is to disregard the wishes of your ward members. Do so in your peril. I have here a list for each one of you, other people, and how they voted. There you go.
Hi there. My name is Angela Lyons. I live outside City Limits, and I'm presenting comments from Marilyn Wolf this evening. You couldn't be here. She entitled her comments, "Wake Up Stevensville, A Nightmare Is Coming." Thank you, town residents, and those of you here tonight who live outside of town. Can we hear you outside? Okay. Thank you, town residents, and those of you here tonight who live outside of town who will also be impacted by this mega subdivision in so many ways. Right now, my biggest concern is the town administration can approve this subdivision with little mitigation and cost to the developer and forward the final bills to town and county taxpayers and forever change a beautiful historic town into a large bedroom community of Missoula. Yes, more homes are needed for the future, but developers must be held accountable for building within reasonable density limits that will not impact the town and local over 2,000 residents by the 2018 consensus. With all legal rules set aside for the subdivision timeline process due to the pandemic, the Stevensville Planning and Assembly Board still held one continued meeting via Zoom. Now the Stevensville Town Council is pushing two hearings within five days to make their decision on this huge subdivision with 16 commercial lots. The town council's second meeting will be via Zoom on the town's website on March 8, 6:30 PM. And we've learned that few people understand Zoom, know how to participate or call in or how to submit a letter. If anything, the town council should hold their last hearing in public because we know their vote may be to approve this terribly planned subdivision. The council should not allow reasoning for the benefit of the commercial portion of the subdivision. They need to face town and county residents in public to justify such a monstrous plan. With all the water, sewer, significant traffic increases, 220 new family units plus a new business area outside the town, which makes no sense, the town administration is rushing a process that demands careful consideration. It's obvious the town council and mayor have favored the developers over meaningful public participation. Why? Will the developers promise to put a pathway to approval? Or town officials jubilant to add more money to town coffers with little consideration about all the costly fixes that will become a tax burden to current residents? Small-town politics are never under spotlight as they should be. Let us all shine a bright light on this mess.
My name is John Monk. This is my third appearance in front of this illustrious board since I've lived in Stevensville for over 50 years, and I've listened to everything that's going on tonight. I think there's been a lot of good questions, and you have no answers for it. I only have one thing that I want to bring up. It seems to me that our water rights have never been approved by the state, and we have no water rights. And when we build the new wells, they are not in compliance with the water rights received. So the question begs are, is this a case of let's do it and do whatever we want? It's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is for permission. I think you should give permission for your water rights before you move on on any of this. Bottom line, water is golden. And you found that out when you put in the water prices you put in, and the city benefited a lot, and you were able to use that money to help pay salaries, to help pay for people who are working for you. From the water come. That's great, but you don't have, you don't own it. You have no rights to it. We have no rights to it. And so it begs the question is, if you have any rights to water from the state, why can't I drill a well on my property? And you have to set it up so I can, according to city ordinance? I think that's wrong. I should have every better right to drill a well on my property as you have to drill a well and claim that it's ours and it's not.
My name is Carl Russ. I live at 1717 Creekside Drive.
Ross, hit off your desk.
My name is Carl Russ. I live at 1717 Creekside Drive. That's on the corner of Syringel and Creekside Drive. And Syringel has five ounces on it, and you're going to connect up the subdivision at the end of that street. Call this at the end of that. It's about a football field length from the intersection of East Side Highway and Logan Lane. You come down the street, you make a right turn, go one house, and you turn to Syringel. Now, you can imagine the difference in traffic and how much experience and I've gone a lot there when this subdivision goes in, connecting it up to Creekside Meadows, and then use 28 streets, three 23rd streets in Creekside Meadows. And as far as school district is concerned, people living in Creekside Meadows, there are most of the people who are either empty nesters or have retired, and very few homes with children that are going to the school system. It's high difference when there's no subdivision that comes in. I don't think the school district understands that at this point in time. Another thing, I'm also one of the artists at the Riversview Gallery, and the question is not a great relief to me. Anyway, I have not much more to say. I am totally opposed to this, you know, traffic and safety concerns. Thank you. Any others that just want to make some remarks? Let me talk, is that maybe we should sign this after the talk? I'd love to see it, but.
Any further comment for the public hearing number four states?
Mayor of the jury and councilman. My name is Pat Gray. I live at the intersection of Eight Mile and East Side Highway in Florence. I've been here since 1978. I lived there from Missoula in 1969. I like to drive down East Side Highway because it's beautiful. It's quiet, it's country. I like to look at the herds of cows and see the deer. And then I even had an opportunity to work in the Creekside Road as a home care aide, and I enjoyed it. I used to walk around with my client, and I enjoyed looking at all the beautiful homes, the gardens. And then, this is a little off the cuff, I was watching PBS and it had a picture of the brownstones in New York, New York City, in Chicago. Where they're set, the story's high, they're being torn down. The area is totally run down, there's nothing there now. And I just think of that as putting all these homes and all these people in this small parcel of land. What's going to happen there?
I'm Vaughn Daly. I live at 5433 Wildlife Way Flaws. If you're going to respond and answer my questions, I appreciate it. I have a property of Middleburg Fork, Northwood Fork, and this concerns me. I'm concerned about this traffic. I'm concerned about how Logan Lane and Middleburg Fork are going to be affected. I'm concerned that they're going to be widened, which will take away possibly my property, people's property down above me and below me. That's a concern. Is that what's going to happen? Has it been addressed? I haven't heard. I don't know how I'm going to find out. I'm also concerned about the easement, Mr. Norman talked about. Where exactly was easement? It's kind of hard to tell from his maps because they are impossible to see. So what's easement? Who's going to be responsible for it? Is it going to affect private property? Who's private property? I don't know how that's going to happen. You know, I've heard a lot of things tonight, and it seems there are a lot of valid questions with the water usage, the water rights, the student sewage handling, the current residents who will be adversely affected by these things. Are we willing to take the responsibility of the residents and the town and the citizens of this community and put their rights in jeopardy? I mean, I'm talking about with, if you own a house that is around the subdivision and you have water today, who's going to be responsible when you don't have water after the subdivision plan? Is it you? Do you want to take the chance that they, if there's no water, how are you going to help guarantee the citizens of Stevensville, the citizens around the subdivision, that they're still going to have water? Can you guarantee that? And what happens if they don't have water? Whose responsibility is that going to be? Is it going to be contractor? Is it going to be the city of Stevensville? Or is it going to be the homeowner that used to have water that doesn't have water? And when we talk about wastewater, what's, I don't know what the plan for the wastewater is. And I'm sure you're really familiar with the Raveling County revision of the wastewater treatment and what's going on there. And how is that affecting what's going on with this proposal? And how is that affecting what's going on with this proposal? Okay. Well, I appreciate your listening. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the job you do. And I really hope you look out for our rights. Thank you.
Any further public comment for the four states?
My name is Jim Sager, fourteen twelve Cree Side Drive. This is a very short bio just to give myself, hopefully, a little credibility about the subject that I'm talking about. These are traffic issues I'm concerned about. I'm a former local enforcement officer, altogether about fifteen years, state county. I have an associate bachelor's and master's in criminal justice administration, police science. And I was an adjunct professor of police science and I lectured abroad as a police expert witness. So the subject I want to talk about tonight is, is an issue regarding Logan Lane and East Side Highway. Logan Lane between East Side Highway and Middleburg Fork is a dangerous stretch of roadway even without this proposed subdivision. Middleburg Fork and Logan Lane has at this time, excuse me, above average crash rate, even based on developers' traffic consultants' report, three to six times the average. At the present time, vehicles traveling south on East Side Highway are often racing the northbound East Side Highway traffic to get through the intersection of Logan Lane and East Side Highway just north of Cree Side Drive, exit on Logan Lane. There have been many resulting close calls in front of the Cree Side Meadows. With such a high concentration of added traffic generated by as many as two hundred and twenty families in a commercial strip, the new traffic onto Logan Lane will significantly increase the dangers of crashes on Logan Lane and Middleburg Fork Fork. Part of my experience, one, was the highway patrol. And I've read the traffic report, I'm sure he's a fine engineer, but I think I have probably more understanding and knowledge of accident causation than the engineer that wrote that. With such a high concentration of added traffic generated by as many as two hundred and twenty families in a commercial strip, the new traffic onto Logan will significantly increase the dangers of crashes. Raveling County Road and Bridge Department estimates a minimum of twenty-five percent increase of traffic volume on Logan Lane versus the developers' consulting system of between ten and twenty percent. My common sense, based upon my experience, causes me to estimate closer to forty to fifty percent. Logan Lane has no shoulders and is relatively narrow. These type roads are especially hazardous to young distracted drivers. And distracted drivers are on the increase, thanks to smartphones and texting. Thirty-five percent of highway fatalities involving young drivers are a result of rollover accidents, often on small roads like Logan. They're very often caused by distracted drivers turning off road onto the shoulder, then over directing and rolling their car. This can often be caused by dodging, turning traffic. Often the young are not wearing seat belts and are ejected through the windshield or through doors which are fully open. And I've spoken to many parents, two o'clock in the morning, to tell them that's exactly what happened to their child. Logan Lane needs widening of their purpose to reduce the chances of this type accident with all this additional traffic. It needs a lot of work, especially at the intersection of Logan Lane and East Side Highway. It is reasonable to assume that all new traffic flowing onto Logan Lane from the proposed subdivision will create more conflict with speeding and distracted drivers on Logan Lane, thus increasing the chance of Logan Lane crashes. I have lived near this intersection for six years now. First, I want to apologize to the police officer here because I'm not talking about anybody in particular in the police department. I have a lot of respect for these guys that come through Cree Side. I've never been quite, didn't really like. They're all fine officers. But I have never in six years seen any officer of any department, state county or city, doing any serious review or watching or observation or especially radar on Logan, anywhere on Logan Lane. In six years, never witnessed anything. I don't know what, again, apologizing to the young officer here. I don't know how police officers are assigning responsibilities in the town or don't know the relief factor and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not making a comment about the young police officers. But I do know there's never been any radar out there that I ever witnessed. If you want to stop spears, reduce crashes, you got to enforce the law. Play this. It's got to be done. According to the latest town staff report, Fair Dad fourteen, quote, "The developers shall pay to the town of Stevensville two hundred dollars a lot for payment for future off-site related improvements as a result of the capacity." Plus that means less than thirty thousand dollars.
Time is expired. Your time is expired. Thank you. Your time is expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Butter Johnson. I live at fifteen oh eight Cree Side Drive. And one of the things I've observed tonight is all the issues brought up have been brought up for the last six months. I wrote three letters. I have no idea if they've been written or read. Acknowledged the issues have been there. And I've never seen any attempt to inform us that they're being addressed, either by the developer or by responsible people in the county. So to me, the issues are still there. They have not been answered. I would suggest that they need to be answered before this goes forward. It should go back to planning zoning to try to address those issues and then see where we are. I would consider the density, sort of all the issues that have been brought up, density, traffic, water, and they need to be addressed before this moves forward.
Good evening, council mayor. My name is Stacy Barker, one oh four Wivesland, and I live in town. Bird Fork Estates is going to affect my property. Right now, we have a high water level in our area, which is obviously right now, we're seeing it with the new bird box development that's gone behind our house. Those water levels, if you put those places out there on Bird Fork, it's not only going to affect Bird Fork, but it's going to affect my home. That water has to go somewhere. Everybody talks about the water levels and the not having water. We have water on our side of the town. Right now, I have probably about two, three inches. We're not even ready for spring to hit yet. Where's that water going to go? It's not going to affect my house. It's going to affect your house, your house, your house and your house. We have to think of these things in the town of Stevensville. Property values are going to go up. Who pays for those property values? Me as a taxpayer. Those that rent, their rent's going to go up. These are things that we have to think about in the economic current, our town of Stevensville as well. I would highly suggest that you guys look at all alternatives for this development that's going in. It's big. It's going to put a big impact on our town. It's going to hurt our businesses that are downtown as well. We need to keep it simple. These type of developments don't belong in our area.
I'm Chad Johnson. I live at three oh one Aspen Trail in Cree Side Meadows. I had a letter here that I had written to the editor, but I'm going to just make it brief and go everybody's sick of hearing all roads and water and whatnot. But a few weeks ago, I was headed south on Logan Lane. Headed home when a truck came off East Side Highway going sixty miles an hour, which is the speed limit on East Side Highway. The truck passed me in a forty-five mile an hour zone, disregarding the double lines, passing the truck ahead of me, which has blinkers on, and with a big road grader ahead of him. Had someone been coming from the opposite end of Logan Lane, he had nowhere to go and no shoulder to pull off on. Someone would likely have been killed. Should Bird Fork Estates be allowed to use our entrance, major construction would need to be done. I know that they have offered to pay two hundred dollars per lot for road construction. That would allow to allow a drop in the bucket for that type of construction. The burden of cost, of course, would not fall on them, but on residents of the whole county. Another concern of mine is the lack of water rights. I've lived in Cree Side Meadows since its conception, and we've never had those issues resolved in the fifteen years that I've been there. To me, it seems well logical that you would take care of those issues before you would allow a mega subdivision to go in beside us. I think that those issues need to be done first. Thank you for your time.
My name's Karen Graham. I own a home in Cree Side Meadows that my sister resides in. I live on Bear Tooth Drive off the East Side Highway. I've said that, isn't it, everybody? And I think there's, I think there are very legitimate concerns that really need to be considered by this town council. I grew up in California with high density subdivisions, and it's one of the reasons I love California. I came here because I was trying to get away from that. And now it's coming here. And you're going to allow this here? And I, it's appalling to me that this quaint, historical, beautiful little town of Stevensville is going to allow a high density subdivision monstrosity. It's appalling to me. And that's not to say that we don't need progress, that we don't need affordable housing. We all know that we do. There's got to be a better way. This is not the way, not the way for Stevensville. I hear people all over the Bitterroot Valley, from way down south by Darby, ugly Missoula, talking about how much they love Stevensville. Such a quaint, historical, friendly little town. This is not the way to go with this town. I'm, and I know you've heard, and you've heard over and over about the water problems, the wastewater problems, the traffic problems. Those are all very valid concerns that really, really need to be addressed. And for the life of me, I can't figure out why we are at the point where we are right now, when those problems haven't even been addressed or fixed. That makes no sense to me. But there are other issues as well. You're talking emergency services. That's going to be affected. That's going to be a taxpayer burden. The school system. I haven't heard a whole lot about the school system. You're talking, you're talking, you're talking adding probably twenty-five percent of the population to the town in the next five, ten years. Twenty-five percent more population in this town. It's going to affect everything in this town. And I am a retired special education teacher. I know about private classrooms, about funding that's not there. I've spent thousands of dollars out of my own pocket in my classroom. This isn't, this isn't, it's not a joke. You're going to have hundreds more kids in your school system. And no one's really talked about that very much. So I just, I really think that you need to consider all these issues. And I'm not sure why this has been pushed and all the issues that keep being brought up over and over and over, like someone said, for the last six months, just keep being ignored and not addressed. So I just, I'm appealing to your good sense and the fact that you work for your constituents and please listen to your constituents. This is not a good fit for Stevensville. And it can be different. Progress is going to happen whether we like it or not. We know that. But let's do it smart and not where you had out of control growth. This is, like I said, that's why I love California. And I just hate to see that happening here. And I'm watching it happen, and it just saddens me. Please take that into consideration. I thank you for your time.
Mayor and the council. I have just something to say.
Would you mind stating your name and go through the...
Oh, no.
No, it's okay.
Nina Williams, one oh five College Street.
Thank you.
As a wildlife biology major, I am totally opposed to any more development around Stevensville. As more and more people are allowed to buy new homes and new developments, our wildlife is pushed out. We all live here, not because of the high wages, but because of the beauty of this valley and its abundant oil life and Stevensville's. And wildlife is very vulnerable to mega subdivision developments like this. There will be more light pollution to the night sky, which really affects many species of birds and bats. More noise, more traffic, more cars killing animals, more cats to kill native birds whose populations are already plummeting here in Rockwood. Our still peaceful little town doesn't want the destruction of the primary reason why we are residents of this town. It might be minor compared to the water issues, but it means a lot to me.
I'm Amy Spade Pope. I live at thirteen oh one Cree Side Drive. There's a lot of wonderful things brought up tonight, all the concerns of our community. So I'll just add a few more. I really would like to give to the board for your love of Stevensville and this community. I'm asking you not to approve this high density proposed development. This development will cause community sharing problems along with increased property taxes due to... due to poorly-prepared infrastructure, inadequate water capacity, wastewater, outlet capacity, road improvements due to increased traffic. Rezoning 16 light commercial business lots is not a proper fit. Business needs to stay in our historic downtown. Please, 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 listen to your Stevensville citizens. This is not moving Stevensville forward. No to this high-density development. Please. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak to Burn Fork Estates? Okay. We're going to take a quick 10-minute break, stretch our legs, and we'll reconvene for the public hearing on utility assistance program charge. We'll again reconvene in 10 minutes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and resume our public hearing this evening. Okay. The next item on the town council's agenda for public hearing this evening is the reinstatement of a charge on water and sewer utility bills to fund the utility assistance program, reducing the fee from $1.52, which was the old charge, to 40 cents, which is the new proposed charge proposed by the town council. In trying to keep with the theme of brevity, the reason behind this public hearing or how we got here is some time ago, the town council established a utility assistance program that would incrementally reduce a water customer who qualified for the program, and that usually meant a disability or a certain age range. They had to qualify for certain criteria. Upon qualification, they'd be enrolled in the program, and based on their income, they would qualify for either a 25% reduction, a 50% reduction, or a 75% reduction in their O and M charges, operation maintenance charges on their utility bill. It did not affect the bond charges on the utility bill. That program has been in place for considerable time, 2015 roughly. The previous town council suspended that charge because of an accumulation that had accumulated in the account for that program. So the program had accumulated enough funding that it could sustain itself for about two years, two and a half years before it would run out. That time has come. The program, funding has run out. There's no longer a balance in that, in that account. And so in order to continue the program for the roughly 11 individuals who are on that program, we need to reinstate the fee that was previously suspended. However, it does not need to be reinstated at the previous $1.52. We learned our lesson and realized the $1.52 was too high, and that would accumulate funding much faster than we needed it to. And so the council directed a charge of 40 cents on each utility bill to cover the program expenses. Montana code requires that when water rates are adjusted, a public hearing is held, and that's the purpose of tonight's hearing. So same drill as Burn Fork Estates. You'll have an opportunity, step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes to make your statement regarding the reinstatement of charge of 40 cents for the utility assistance program.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Steve Gibson, Stevensville. I think it's a good program. I'm just a little confused. On my bill is that it would increase 40 cents. Where it reads this, it's going to go down a dollar?
No, sir. So the old charge is $1.52.
Right.
We're not reinstating $1.52. You haven't seen the old charge on your bill for about two years.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm not opposed to the program. It's just I was confused when you read $1.52.
I understand that. I'll be transparent in saying, we weren't sure if a public hearing was required because we're technically not raising water rates. We're reducing them, but we're reinstating a charge that was already adopted, and it got very complicated. So to err on the side of caution, we thought we'd spend some time on public hearing rather than money on litigation. Any other public comment on the program or the reinstatement of the charge? No? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Anything for the good of the order from town council? All right, with that, we'll adjourn the public hearing. It is 8:58 PM. Thanks, everyone.